All right, it is 8:31. I'll call this morning the meeting to order. I'm looking for an approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens wishing to speak on anything not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move into the approval of payments and bills and vouchers.
Move approval.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Our minutes from April 24th.
Move approval.
The motion to approve was presented.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. Our item number two is the Adopt the Resolution 2018-21 to Avoid the Sale of Jail Bonds. We have Shelley Eldridge here and also Brian Burke will be joining on this. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. The approval of the sale of a bond, and I want to go over a couple little things, and I know Shelley's got a couple things to talk about as well, but what you, well, why don't, if we would, Shelley, why don't you go over the details of it, what it's sold for and things like that, because then we're going to talk a little bit about payments and things.
Yes, okay.
If you have a realization to that, so.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Shelley Eldridge with Ellis &amp; Associates, municipal advisor for the Clay County. Yesterday, we took bids on your $7,500,000 bonds. You should have received an official statement, which I'm sure you read, cover to cover, ribbiting information. And we, you should have a copy of the day of sale report that was provided, I think, earlier today.
Yep.
And in there, we did, we did go through the rating process. This was credit enhanced by the state of Minnesota, but because of the size of the bond, we did an underlying rating, and Standard &amp; Poor's affirmed the county's AA rating with a stable outlook. We received five bids, and the bid tabulation, you can see who bid, was page three, page, page two, four, and page three, five. And we, and those bids, the winning bid was from FTN Financial Capital Markets out of Memphis. Then, there was also, I just want to bring to your attention, there was a couple, a couple of bids from Minneapolis, one from Milwaukee, and one from Birmingham, Alabama. So it was more than a regional interest in the county, in the county's bonds. The thing that I think is important on these bids is that the spread on the first four was very, very, very close. The difference between the first and second bid was less than a basis point. It was .003, with one basis point being a .01. The second one, between the second and the third, was .005. So between the first and the third, it wasn't even a full basis point. It took to the fourth one to get up to a basis point, and it was just barely over. So, the total spread was seven basis points, .07, so it was very, very, very tight bidding, which indicates that that's where the market was. It wasn't something, you weren't really high in the market, and so I think it was a very, very good bid. We had estimated a true interest cost of 3.4, and it came in at the 3.1436, so we were 27 basis points under what we had estimated. And again, we did have some cushion in our estimate in the event that the market were to move, so. And it basically came in right on the, the graph at the last page is our bond buyers' index. You know, I like my picture. And that bond buyers' index, and that's the national averages of AA paper over the last week. National average is 3.83, so with the general obligation, we were well under that. And the bond buyers' index, when we called for the sale, has gone up, or has gone down about seven basis points. So, I think we're, I think the bids, I say that just to say, we got good bids. One of the things that we looked at was the par amount, and in talking to Lori yesterday, by dropping at $5,000, we saved like $4,000 on the Standard &amp; Poor's fee. So we dropped the bond five, because the 7.5 is the next step up for their fee. So she said, yeah, let's, let's drop it and save a little bit on the cost of issuance. And the cost, so the cost, the total difference in the cost of issuance after that was almost $7,000 less.
Okay.
The discount allowance was about $25,000 less than we had estimated. There was, in fact, a premium bid, as we had discussed, and I, you know, if you remember, we raised the par amount, thinking that we'd be able to, to lower it by the, by the re-offering premium. And in discussions with, or with, yesterday with, with Brian and Lori, they thought that it would be best to keep the premium and put it in the construction account. Now, if you don't use those dollars, you can put those in your debt service account and use that to pay debt service if the project doesn't need it, so. Capitalized interest was a little bit more because of, than we estimated. But, all in all, let's see, the, the project fund, we estimated at, just under 7.2, and we're putting in an additional $228,000 into the project fund. So, pages, page, page six is your sources and uses of funds. Page seven and eight are the, are the updated debt service runs. Your page eight showing what the hundred, with the 105% coverage that's required by the state. Your bond rating report is the next few pages, and we already chatted a little bit about the, about the bond buyers' index. You should have an updated resolution from Dorsey &amp; Whitney that includes all the results of the sale for your consideration when it's time.
And Madam Chair, just a couple little points on that. Shelley did talk about the premium bid, and for the other commissioners, we did have conversation with Commissioner Campbell, who chairs that committee, plus Commissioner Mojo, who is chair of the board, and they thought that the premium, accepting the premium was the right way to go, because this is a reconstruction project, and the extra $200,000 may be needed. And other, if we were to accept the 7.27, we would only net it out 7.197, and that is less than the amount that we needed, so we felt the cushion was needed. Also, the 105% of the debt costs that we, she talked about levying, that is to assure that there is money in the fund to make those payments. And if you do have a amount in there to cover that payment, that is not needed to levy. So, the, it shows a $547,000 payment a year, and that is not necessarily what we would be levying, because we would have the payment amount in the account. So the, the levy that needs to be collected would be $520,000, not around, sometimes it's 521, other than, it's 518, 519. So at $520,000 a year to make the payment, and what we broke down earlier on the percentage, it was 55% will go towards the, the multi-county share, and 45% will go for the non-secure, and that is all county. And with the budget that Steve had put together, very early on in this process, he had budgeted $226,000 payment for the non-secure, and what I could figure this morning, our payment, if you split that $520,000, it'll be $234,000 payment. So, more than, almost a year ago, he established this, and we're only $8,000 off, and that's pretty darn accurate. And on the secure side, which is the multi-county side, he had budgeted $280,000, I believe it is, 275, sorry, and the payment is 286, so it's about $11,000. So, really close to that one as well. So, I, I, what I'm, I guess what I'm trying to say in, in common terms is that this whole process, the budgeting process, the, the design of it, and the bond sales, we're just really so very close to what the projections have been, so it certainly looks like it would be wise to go ahead and approve the sale.
If I may.
Yes.
The 105%, if I, if I can clarify, if there is the 5% coverage in the debt service, if there is already that sitting in the debt service, this county on any of their levies for their bonds can write down the levy with just a statement in their resolution saying they have funds on hand to cover their, their debt service. So that's, that's kind of across the board on any of your bonds. When we think back on the jail bonds, that'll be written down by sales tax and that type of thing. And, so, so when your levy comes through, you know, Lori is arbitrarily taking care of that with, with, with a statement to that effect, so. We need to, we need to, in our documentation, calculate the annual 5%, but if it's done the first time, you're good.
Okay. Comments?
I think Brian said it all.
Yeah.
Right on.
No, and I do, I do want to reiterate that we did have a conversation, and, and the co, the concerns that Commissioner, Commissioner Campbell had over a month ago, I think, are addressed by accepting that other, the other rate. So, I think giving us a cushion, as you said, that we could or could not use, I think is important.
I have a question on, on page two that says, the little bit is 311436.
1469.
There's a little bit of that chart there, results of sales, 1469, is that the, is that figure wrong there on the?
The difference is af, the, the difference, Commissioner and Chair, is that the, the bottom chart is after the $5,000 was taken out. It's recalculated. So it's just a little bit different.
Does that clarify your question?
Well, I was just concerned that which figure is right, then. Must be the 1469 is the right figure there, huh?
That's correct. If you go to page seven, and you go down to the bottom chart, the second line down where it says on the left side, true interest cost, the 31469523. That is after the $5,000 was taken out, so it changes just a little bit.
So it's the 69, okay.
That's correct.
I'll move to adopt resolution 2018-21.
We have a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
And a second. Further discussion? Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Stephen, I wonder, I wonder if, after this, maybe you can just send a memo out to our members stating that we received these today, and that, and the interest rates came in where we expected to, and it falls within our budget.
Okay.
I think it would just be good to keep them up to date on moving on. Thank you.
Also, just a note, thank you very much for your estimates. I, I know that to see into the future over a year and be that close within a bid is, is talent, but also means that you really have a handle on what's going on, so thank you very much for your work. Anything else? Thank you. Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Is Kathy coming for night, number three? Okay, item number three, request for out-of-state travel. Hey, welcome, Jenny.
Kathy McKay and Gina Maffey, I guess, the, the motion director.
All right.
Here to request out-of-state travel for two separate grant programs. The first is the, travel is for the National Diabetes Prevention Program, which is part of the community grant program, and that is a CDC grant that focuses on chronic disease prevention. And then the second is for the National Smokeless Tobacco Prevention Summit, which is under the Clearway Grant, and again, chronic disease prevention with a tobacco focus. Both of these are completely covered by the grant and recommended by each of the grant managers of the program.
All right, let's do these in two separate motions. If you have questions, we can address those.
I think most to approve the National Diabetes.
We have a motion to approve the travel to Georgia.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Atlanta, June.
I'll move for the National Smokeless Tobacco Prevention Summit.
All right, we have a motion to approve the second request to California.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Is Dave coming for?
Yes.
All right, we're ahead of schedule, so do you want to do one of your, do you want to do your committees?
Oh, sure.
Sorry. Sorry to get you.
That's okay. Actually, last week, I did attend the manager's offsite training in the afternoon. I thought that was well-run by, by Brian and Darren, and a lot of good insight into the future planning was discussed there. Yesterday, we had a, two meetings. We had, in the morning, we had a construction meeting regarding the juvenile project, and basically, there wasn't a whole lot to discuss there because we are still waiting for permits through the state. And I think, I think maybe Brian and your reports, you can update on what you got from a memo from Kerry yesterday afternoon, but that, you know, we're still hopeful that they can start the demolition, or demolition and the concrete work, you know, get, get the permit for that soon from the city. Then in the afternoon, we did have the law enforcement center and the correctional facility construction meeting, that, again, is going very well. Highlight that I took out of yesterday's meeting, other than the fact that everything is just going on schedule, was that all underground work is complete now between the correctional facility and the boiler plant.
Good.
So that's, that's good news, and the boilers are going to be exchanged coming up real soon, and it's going to be a, just a two-day project, and they're going to have all the old boilers out and new boilers in, in a matter of two days, so. And then there was a couple of change orders that we, as owners, had a little discussion on regarding why, why we found out at such slight notice, and they were dealing with security issues and vents and stuff like that, and so we ultimately gave the go-ahead on those, so. That completes my report.
All right, thank you. All right, Dave, if you're ready, we'll take yours. You have a recommendation to increase a fee for access permits, and you also have the opening bids for London Urban Reconstruct. Good morning.
Good morning. We'll have to have some dialogue here with our permits, because we can't even open those bids for 10 minutes.
Okay.
They're electronic.
Okay.
But, yeah, we can certainly take care of the permit.
Okay.
I got a lot of them there. We, I, I think I touched on this a little bit during my departmental update to the board, and then we also had a discussion at the Highway Tracking Committee on April 10th. And as you can see in this spreadsheet there, what I tried to do is take a look at all permits that the highway department sells, take a look at what we feel our overhead costs are and what our fees are, and most of them are pretty much right in line. The one that's a little skewed, I guess, is the access permit, which requires, I think, more oversight on our part. There's a, there's an initial inspection, because we have to go out there and take a look at drainage. We have to measure culverts. We also have to size them and make sure we, you know, if the county is, is per policy going to replace that at our cost, we got to make sure we get the right length and all that, so. And then we also want to make sure that it's built, so they don't build it too steep and they put it in the right spot, and so our costs are, in most cases, over $200 per permit. We've been only charging $100. So I did take a good look. I must have called over a dozen different other neighboring counties and just tried to take a look at what the, you know, what, what's it averaging costing other residents in other counties, and it was all over the board. There was quite a few of them that were real close to the $100 mark. There were some that were over 200. I think Douglas County was $200. So I don't think we'd be out of line in looking at a little price hike on this to, basically to cover some of the county overhead costs on it. Of course, this cost does not include the price of the culvert. We've got a separate budget line item for culvert costs, too, so what we looked at is maybe suggesting a $25 increase, so the cost for any new access permit would be 125 versus 100.
All right. Well, I certainly feel that it's important to align some of these fees with what, maybe not covering all of our costs, obviously, that's why people pay taxes, but to cover specifically if it's taking more staff time. I think that's appropriate, and I think this is a modest increase, so it's not too high. But you did discuss this at Highway, and I assume that Highway was in support. Okay?
I'll move a motion to approve the fees.
We have a motion to approve the access permit change and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. So much for that being a lengthy discussion.
Seeing as we have a couple minutes to kill, I have a, Dave, have you had a chance to review the, the area?
County Road 3. Yeah, so what we did there, Kevin, is we, we took a look at things, and we are in the, we have drafted a letter. If it hasn't went out, it should go out any day, but I read through it, made a few edits, sending it out to some of the hauling companies up there, making a request that the, the heavy loads go on the Highway 18 and Highway 75 and stay off of County Road 3. County Road 3 is starting to see the toll.
And what, did you further go out to determine the condition of that road?
Yeah, like I said, I think on the, it seems like on the southbound lane, it's actually worse. On the shoulder area there is really starting to.
That's because they're coming in heavy.
It does appear to be. That's, that was what we were guessing as well. You know, and it is quite a ways out on our five-year plan. It's a few years out. It's not happening anytime soon, so the, the more we can keep that road in better shape, it's going to be better for everybody. You know, it's not a huge.
Have you, have you come, come up with a determination then that would allow you to reduce the weight limits on that road?
Yeah, right now, we're going to ask voluntarily to see if they will do that, and then we'll continue to work with the city of Morad and see if, if, you know, I believe there is statute, though, that does describe, you know, if your road is being damaged. What we'd like to really wait for is that pavement management information to come through here this summer, and then we'll have even more data that would support putting up a no-truck road designation.
Thank you.
Also, an issue that came up last week, we noticed that some of our county-owned, county-owned property parcel had been posted, and, and had you had a chance to run out there and put that?
Yeah, I drove yesterday and seen that the sign was removed, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it was a flood by out site, I think.
Right.
It looked like a personal type of a posting, no trespass, no hunting type sign on there. And, you know, we certainly didn't put that up, so I had that.
And it's not our, obviously, it's not our position to be posting those. That's not a position we've taken. I know in Cass County, if it does become something that you're hearing complaints on, I think Cass County has put signs on their properties that said that it's county-owned property and would prohibit motorized vehicles, so I'm not sure if that's, that can, that's a concern specifically on that one, but just so you're aware that I did have highway. We have a couple minutes still. Do you have?
Yes, on.
Just, okay. Go for it, Jim, do you want to?
On Wednesday, I had an ITV meeting along with Commissioner Wayland for the Northwest Regional Emergency Communication Board, and the board approved submission of a grant application for Clay County for the purchase of radios for three rural fire apartments.
Okay, good.
Then, also on Wednesday, I attended part of the manager's offsite training, and on Thursday, I attended the Soil and Water Conservation District, along with yourself.
Yes.
And then after the Soil and Water Conservation District, I went over to the Alternative Learning Center, and my wife and I performed for the graduation service for the Alternative Learning graduates, and your dad was there representing the school board.
I did hear, yeah. I heard you were there, yeah. Well, thank you.
That's my report.
Awesome, great, thank you. Commissioner Gross, do you have a lengthy report?
Tuesday, I went to Bolin Township for their township meeting, and their concern was, well, County 18, they got concerned that, well, we already did part of it, but they want to, the rest of it redone. They think it's wavy or, I don't know. They had concerns about that. Also, the Sentences Served program, I see some of the townships are concerned about that, because we voted a couple months ago to separate ourselves, I think, with the state Sentences Served. They probably called it a different thing, but we call it Sentences Served, I guess, and they're concerned that they're not going to have the availability of the people to help them out at the townships, and I'm sure that we still will have that program going, so. And then from there, I went to Yulin City, went over the, what we're doing with the jail, the juvenile center, just concerns, what's happened in the county. Just gave them updates on what's happened in the county. Wednesday, I went to the Wild Rice Watershed Meeting, and they had their audit report, the yearly audit report, and they got a good report on that. And they also had some permit, the, I don't know, I've seen some permit applications with this buffer program, I think some people are, I don't know if I took it right or not, but they're trying to change waterways to get their things out of, their drainage ditch out of, out of the buffer program, you know, changing the waterways, do a different ditch or something like that, so. I don't know if something like that is going on or not, but just some question of that. Wednesday, also the training for managers, I was there for the afternoon. There was a good training there. Wednesday night, Highland Grove Township, I went to there. There again, they're concerned about, went over the jail and the juvenile center, and they had some concerns about the roads, too, and maybe, I mean, they, not concerns about the roads, they said the roads are in good shape up there and stuff like that, so that was a good report there. Thursday, I went to the open house over probation officer. I'm on that committee that we had rearranged some of those people over there in the, in the family service center and the probation officer. I don't know if you've gone to those rooms or not, but they look very nice, and I think they, they're very happy with their new situation over there, so. And last night, I went to Hit It All City. They had, as I was going through the jail and stuff like that, they were concerned. I mean, I don't know what they're feeling, that we've got cost overruns in the jail and stuff like that, and I'm sure that we're none, and that we're doing okay, the box is going good. So we discussed the jail and juvenile center, went to Gooseberry Township, and they're working on a land used or mining, a resolution for a mining operation, which I'm going to bring up. We've got a highway tracking, but we don't, you know, bring that up as far as a mining operation, so. Those are the meetings I have.
Let's clarify, do you have highway tracking today?
Not today, no, it's next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. We'll bring it up then.
Is that, though, the, that's not the mining on the agenda for the planning commission tonight, correct?
No, it's not. It's just something that. No, it's not. It's just something that the Gooseberry, it looked like a pretty good resolution or ordinance that they're trying to establish up there.
Great. Great. Well, we are past nine o'clock, so I believe you'll be able to open those bids now.
Yeah. I got, maybe I can just run through a little bit of information on the, on the project itself. We do have some federal aid money for that, for the ten-foot path. It's kind of a trail extension on that. So based on that it is federal aid, there is other requirements that come along with that. So, you know, I'm hoping, kind of a game plan is if the, obviously, we're hoping that the bids come in at our estimate or below. If they do, we would like to award contingent on three things. First thing would be no errors, obviously, in the bids. We'd also want a contingent on Mindot's Office of Civil Rights, that they review and certify the DVE participation, on-job training goals, and then workforce plan. And then we'd also want a contingent upon approval by the city of Glendon as well, since they're partners, so. We have those bid tabulation sheets. Yep. We've got the project worked into three phases. And we are obviously probably maybe a month to six weeks behind what we were hoping for a schedule come this spring. A lot of that had to do with two things. Had to do with the railroad agreement, you know, there's such extension of railroad work there. Took a long time to get their, their agreement done. And it also had a lot to do with just getting this project approved by the state. There was some right-of-way, temporary right-of-way that was needed, and it just took a long time to get that. So what we're looking at doing now is the first phase would be from, I think it's going to be right in front of the school there. So from the railroad tracks down to, I believe it's Ninth Street. So we've got about forty-nine working days that we, and that's the first phase. We'll get down right in front of the school first. The next phase then would be from Ninth Street all the way down to the south end of the project. We've got about forty-five working days there. And we're kind of thinking that that might be all the work that we really want to open up here in 2018. Unless a contractor, it comes in with enough workforce that they can get it all done. What we really want to eliminate is to tear up the north piece there from Highway ten down to the railroad tracks after school starts. Because there's so many school buses. And we've also got the fertilizer plant and elevator right there. And to tear all that up, I just don't know where we'd be gaining anything. So what we did is we altered our work plan a little bit in the bid to allow for a 2019 completion on that north phase.
Okay.
I think it could save us some money and a lot of hassle. I really don't want to send all them school buses to the west there to Highway seventeen. It's an uncontrolled intersection. It's really hard to cross that lane if you have to go into Morehead there. To create something that's unsafe costs us more money. I don't see the benefits. So the city and the consultant and the county all kind of got together. And we realized that as we're losing time here, we might want to rework that a little bit. So I think the best-case scenario, somebody will come in and bang it in with a couple of different crews and get it all done. But we're kind of expecting we would finish the north phase in 2019 when school's completed for the year, so.
Okay. Well, thank you for taking those factors into account. Any comments? If not, let's move forward with your bid tabulation.
Eric should be in here any second.
Oh, he's got it. Okay.
Madam Chair, Dave contacted me this morning too, and they have a cutoff on their electronic bits. And so Leah's got to download those and bring them in as soon as he can.
No problem.
One question now. On wheel tracks, how, the cities, is there a seven-year limit for them to use that?
We kind of identified a loose seven-year plan. And if someone wanted to go outside of that, we thought they could request it to the county. But that is, it was kind of written in our policy, I think, or, but it was seven years, correct? I don't know that we would take his money away.
When we originally worked on that, we allowed them to bank up to seven years with the idea that, you know, if there was some significant project that they were saving for, that that could probably be extended. So it's-
Okay, so they can because, because that was a concern, but they have to use that money or lose it.
I, but I think they, I think they need to indicate what they're saving it up for, though, you know.
Okay.
That's, that was the intent of, because we, the whole purpose of that, Commissioner Gross, was so that they work on roads and get things done. You know, and so if it's, we don't want money sitting in the bank account. We want the roads fixed.
But some of the smaller towns, you know, when they get five thousand dollars, you know, there isn't much of a project you do.
But that's why we did the seven-year deal.
Yeah. And if they just want to let us know of something they have in mind, I think we'd be more than flexible. As you can see, we've got a pretty, a pretty sizable list here. I do know that there was four contractors or four bids on the electronic portion that were pending to be opened. So it was kind of nice to see the electronic ones. There's absolutely no, no room for error. If they do electronically, all the, you know, their insurance papers and everything is all put in there. So everything's pretty well bulletproof. It's real easy to open those up, so.
Famous last words, electronically is-
We did have some issues at one time with that, didn't we? So that's why we do it back there, though. Everything works perfect when you're not on camera and in front of everybody, so.
What could possibly go wrong?
Although it does seem like-
Chris, how's that certification coming?
That's it?
And the comment, they, they were changing it since we observed what went with that. They changed the process. And everything's approved. There's a ninety-day comment period, which can't imagine anybody making any comment on getting voted on.
Okay. All right. While we're waiting, I think we'll have Commissioner Wayland do his reports.
Let's see. I attended the construction meetings for the jail, the LAC, and the detention center. And Kevin already reported on that. I had a, I went to the off-site training for the county last week, and I thought that was very good. I had a yellow, beyond the yellow ribbon meeting, and we did election of officers. And somebody will be here to give an update and annual report on the yellow ribbon situation, probably in June, to the county board. I attended the regional radio board meeting, and Frank reported on that. And I had a Greater Fargo-Martin Economic Development Corporation Executive Committee meeting. And we had an update on Fueling the Future, which is a joint project between the EDC and the Chamber of Commerce for Fargo-Martin, West Fargo. And we had an update on our search for a president for the EDC. And we should have something resolved probably later today on that issue. And then I attended Morehead City Council meeting last night, and we'll be talking more about that a little later. So that was it for me.
Thank you. Last week, I also attended the off-site department head training. The resiliency presentation from Sand Creek, I feel, was something that was really beneficial. So I hope the department heads and the other employees that attended that felt it was worthwhile. Thank you to Darren and Brian for your afternoon presentation. I think the dialogue was important. And I think the bullet points, I think, should remain fresh in all of our minds as we continue to go through the years, as we've identified hot-button issues that are coming up, just to kind of keep them at front and center as we deal with transitions. I attended the Soil and Water Conservation District meeting. We had a lengthy present, or a report from NRCS and also talked about the pollinator habitat in Crestwood that we are moving forward on. I know that that's, there's some discussion with both the Highway Department. There's some garbage out there that Dave has instructed Brian and the crew to pick up in order to get in, maybe plant that this spring thus far. I had some email correspondence with Jennifer in HR. The job position for county administrator is now live. And so there's a link there. If you want to share within your professional networks, do so. And this morning, I was presented with a letter from our chief assistant, Clay County Attorney, who is offering her resignation as she moves forward with some-
That's a legal question. Do we have to accept that as a board?
Some new endeavors. We're really excited for you, Jennifer, or Jenny, but we also will miss you. You've really added a lot to the multitude of issues that you've helped us through. So your last working day will be July twenty-seventh.
That's right.
So we've got a few more weeks to make you, keep you busy anyways, so.
Fill it that inbox, so I can leave it for my, for my replacement.
I, I do want to come. I, I was really disappointed to read this today from being selfish, that, from the county standpoint, because of the good work you've done for us here. And it's yet another key person that is leaving our county. And it's just, I'm happy for you. I'm happy for where you're going and your opportunities. But I really want to thank you for, when you give answers or advice to this board, I've accepted it with confidence that it's going to be good. And I, so I really appreciate what you've done. And good luck to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I've certainly got a lot, a lot of time left here, so you'll still see me for a few months. But, but no, it's been a great experience here, fourteen years. And I started as a roster employee. So talk about working your way up. A lot of good times and mostly just fabulous people that I've gotten to work with. That is what I've found to be exceptional about this, this county and this place to work. So thank you for allowing me the opportunity these years. And I've enjoyed working with all of you. And I'm very humbled to hear that when I've, when I've given advice, that there was the confidence there. Because that's what I think anybody in this position strives for. So thank you. And we will see you still. I'm not going anywhere just yet.
Well, our loss is certainly the next employee's gain, so. Brian, do you want to start your reports?
Sure. Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I, I know I shouldn't, I shouldn't have to say anything here too. But I'm going to say something about Jenny as well, because we've worked so closely together the last couple of years on so many projects. And I've told her this, and I think you need to know this too, and I think you do. But she brings a real common sense to the legal field. And had she not been flexible and negotiable and politically savvy to a couple of different issues, I don't know that we would be having the law enforcement center built or the juvenile center built. Because we had some tough negotiations at times, and we had to bend and, and be creative and things to get that done within the legal framework of protecting the county. And that, that really, it takes flexibility within the legal mind to do that. And Jenny was very good on that. So she's, and that's just a couple. That's just a couple of the incidences that we have struggled through, from personnel to lots of different things. So, yeah. I was going to say I'll really miss her, but we're leaving at the same time. So I just look on together. I shouldn't laugh about it. It's just the truth, that's all.
The difference is that I have to go back to work.
And I'll probably go crazy. Okay. I attended the swearing-in last Wednesday morning for a new deputy down in the courtroom here. And then also attended the resilience training. And I'll say there that your chair, Commissioner Moes, did attend the whole works, the two sessions of the resilience training in the morning, which was really impressive that she would endure that, so to speak, and then the afternoon session. So I appreciate all of your attendance at that too. That was, that just makes it, makes it work. So appreciate that. We had some meetings, phone conversations mostly, and email dialogue back and forth with the bond review and, and the finishing touches on, on different things on that. So it all came together today. Appreciate your approval of that. We, wasn't it last Tuesday, we did have that meeting after the board meeting on the priority of the solid waste, which we attended. We'll be talking more about that, I think, in a few minutes too. Met with construction engineers last Friday and talked about some of the things that are going on. And Commissioner Campbell referred to it. I'll jump to the construction meeting. But one of the big issues there was a twenty-nine thousand dollar change order in addition for sealing diffusers. And they were, there were some standard diffusers put in place in the bid. And we felt, the county felt, that they should be secure diffusers in a secure facility. And it's not the issue of people escaping through them because that building, anybody is going to sneak out of that building, I'll tell you. But it's, they, if you don't have a graded diffuser, Julie, and a valid concern was that contraband could be put up there and things along those lines. So after much discussion and review and support from the commissioners, we decided to go ahead with, with that. Then there were some others suggested. There was a ten thousand dollar change order in regards to some sidewalk grates and going from an epoxy to a, to a cast iron, and that was declined. So, so we, I guess, the reason why I bring that up is that it isn't just suggest a change and make it happen. We, we reviewed that. So very, very positive meeting in regards. We had a juvenile construction meeting yesterday morning. And what Commissioner Campbell was talking about there is the, the DOC has to sign off on the state. Then it has to go over to the building department, I'll say, that has to then sign off on a-
State building.
Yeah, yes, right. And then their signing off brings it back to the city for then a permit to be issued. And the state is still stumbling a little bit. And the response this morning, or this, that Carrie sent over yesterday afternoon, and then we asked for clarification this morning on it, they are requiring two drinking fountains instead of one, you know, different heights in it. And then he said a couple of other smaller things that they'll be able to straighten out. But they need to get that confirmation before they can send it. And what they're hoping for is, what Commissioner Campbell said, they want to get at least a demolition permit going so they can clean out the space that Steve is going to be at. And we hope to get that done within the next day or two. So that is moving forward. And there's always things that need to be satisfied, I guess. So I tended with Commissioner Wayland for the city council meeting last night. And I'm assuming we'll have that discussion after Dave's opening bid.
They're working on these passcodes to get into the bids, but they're, now they're in a go-to meeting with our people of our division to try to get in there.
So this foolproof electronics.
You just come to bulletproof. Okay.
Sure. If I, if I can, I just, going back to Brian, your comments regarding the change order, the thirty thousand dollar change order that we approved. One, one thing the board needs to keep in mind is that, that this still falls well within our contingencies that we have. Our contingencies are very, we've used very little of them. So I just, I want to make that point, that this, this isn't increasing what we had planned for financially.
Right. Absolutely a valid point. It comes within the guaranteed maximum price on it. And it's just to keep you informed on what is taking place on there. So yes, there's still quite a bit of room yet.
And then, and then the other thing too, seeing as how we're trying to kill some time here, the, you mentioned about the demolition as being one of the things that we're trying to get. But it also was then to be able to get in there and pour the footings on the new, on the new addition part.
That is correct.
So we're hoping to get building permits to do those two things right now or while we're waiting for the rest, yeah.
Just one point on that contingency, you know, I think that is an important thing to emphasize to the cities and the townships that we are coming in, I think, under, we can see under budget on that, on the jail project. And to put that out there, that we're not going over what we approved, you know, so.
Yeah. In fact, Madam Chair and Commissioner Gross, I wouldn't raise my right hand and swear to this, but I'm pretty accurate on it. I think we're still at about five hundred thousand dollars on contingency left, just on the construction contingency. Because, and the reason why I say that with confidence, the, what we've been doing is the, the construction contingency, we've been using for most of these projects. And, and construction engineers went along with that. And they said that they would be, they're very comfortable in utilizing it that way as long as we have at least three hundred thousand dollars left when we start the second phase. as long as we have at least $300,000 left when we start the second phase. Although the second phase, again, just to reiterate that, that is very minimal, that's office space and laundry and kitchen areas, it's not in the secure side of that, so that, and if you noticed, I give you a copy of the pay statements that we sent, we're at about 80%, about 70, probably 77 or 78% payment on the, on the correctional facility, and we're at about 83% on the law enforcement center, and that was with the last payment. And so, the, what's left over in the second phase of the correctional facilities, you know, to maybe 17, 18% of, of the billing, so we're in really good shape there.
Well, I just want the perception out there that we are doing good, I mean, I think we, I know we're doing good, you know, but just as I go over to these township meetings and these city meetings, I don't know if that perception is there, you know, it's just, rumors fly easy.
Yeah, well, and, and, and problem that happens so many times is these projects, they go into them, and then additions get added without control, and projects end up ending, costing more than what they expected to, so the perception is, it's a government operation, so therefore it's going to cost you more than what they'd said, and I think that's what, what happens, and that's not the case. We're staying within those budgeted dollars, so.
Yeah, I don't know if we've got any system set up where we tell people what's happening, I mean, probably the web, probably it's on the website, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't go there, I guess, so.
Well, maybe, maybe we should do a little, little bit more clarification on that, in our, after our construction updates that we give you, but what Mr. Berg stated was that there's still about $500,000 left of the $800,000 construction contingency, but what he didn't mention is there's also still almost the entire $250,000 of the owner contingency that's, that's part of that, of the correctional facility project. So we're still looking at three quarters of a million dollars of unused contingencies.
And I'm glad to hear that, like I say, what I, the feeling I'm getting from these meetings is that-
I, I don't know why they, they feel that way, or where they're getting their information.
That's what I'm just saying, somehow or other, we can get out there, though, hey, we are doing good. Except the technology, we're not that great. Sorry about that.
So I conclude your reports?
Yes, thank you.
All right, why don't we take a five-minute break, see if we can't get, figure out what's going on there, but great, I'm working on with IT is trying to access those bids, all of the bids were time stamped and on time, so that's, there are no additional bids that are being accepted. What we'll do is, we have some discussion to continue for this meeting, and if for some reason we're able to unlock that before we're done with this, we'll take the bids. Otherwise, because of advertisement rules, we won't have any other choice but to address them on Tuesday. Are we good now?
I think we may have got it.
Okay, so it sounds like we may have got it, so do you want to?
Tell a lot of people that goes down.
Okay, so forget what I just said.
I hope it's not a false alarm, but.
All right, we have a backup plan.
I think there was four bids electronically, we don't really know at this time until you open them up, if they're complete or not, but I believe there was at least three for sure that were complete. We do have the one unopened paper copy from Dakota Underground, so hopefully Eric's able to bring in the computer here shortly, and we'll finish this up. Apologize for the delay to the board and all the public that might be watching, or-
Thank you to our contractors, you're being flexible. No, it's a busy season to be sitting in a room, so thanks for your patience.
You know, on that matter, where the pollinator project is?
Yeah.
I did drive out there yesterday myself, I went, we, we poured a deck, a bridge deck on County Route 57, so that was poured, and then we drove out and took a look in there, and I did not see any of that garbage.
It's beyond?
Yeah, that's what I thought it might be, so we, we went down on the far north place, we walked down to the river and looked around a little bit, but I did give Brian the information from the-
To Tony.
Yep, so I'm hoping that they were, they got in touch and-
He can show you right where it is, as I said yesterday, but he, he did say it is more than a couple pickup loads.
Okay.
But it was strategically hidden behind some trees on the side of the berms. All right, thanks for your-
Difficulties.
-help getting this done. I think in the future, if we've got a bid timestamp that needs to be in by nine, we'll at least have a half hour delay before we've got it on the agenda, it probably will help.
Yeah, this is a little unusual, we had some difficulties, but-
Gotcha.
I'll try to read these quick before they disappear on me.
So the engineer's estimate was $5,109,974?
Correct, yep.
And you have an addendum, correct?
Yep. One bid.
Okay.
So we did have four bids here, it looks like four electronic bids, and there's only one that is complete. The one that is complete is Sling Brothers Incorporated, their bid was submitted at 7:42 a.m., it's a complete bid. The bid bond, we do have present, we got a paper copy of that, and the bid amount is $6,286,878 and zero cents. That's $6,286,878 and zero cents.
Madam Chair, does that include the addendum as well?
But I believe for it to be a complete bid, the addendum would have to be acknowledged, but we can certainly drill into that.
It's going to be accepted, any bid would be accepted contingent on review and assurance that all those were present, correct?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and you said the other three bids were incomplete?
Yep. So we want to, we'll rebuild those, there's not even a dollar amount to go with them, so. And then we did receive one paper bid from Dakota Underground, from Fargo. Looks like we do have the bid bond here, present, an amount of 5%. Yeah. So, so the addendum is acknowledged, and we have a complete proposal here, and the bid amount is $6,881,627 and 80 cents. That's $6,881,627 and 80 cents.
Well, I think we're going to need a week to probably go through this a little bit, it's well over our, I think our, we had a 10% figure, about 5.6 million, and this is probably closer to 20% over our estimate. We will have to confer with the city and take a look at our funds and take a look at the project, and bring back recommendation in a week.
Right. Comments? Well, that's a good plan, I'm not in favor of going a million dollars over, 20% over, so.
That's too much.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry for, sorry for the inconvenience.
So as we've, we've talked significantly since the legislative session is going on, that Clay County obviously has a project that we've worked diligently and hard over the past few years to make sure we have a complete project that's shovel-ready before we ask for funding from the state, because of significant advocating by not only our administrator and Commissioners and Solid Waste Director in collaboration with the solid Steve Moore from the City of Moorhead, we were able to get preliminarily, so dollars allocated at the state level, and because of our continued dialogue, I wanted to make it clear to St. Paul that where Clay County's priority stands, and because of that, and those who attended the City of Moorhead's not only meeting to declare a priority a week ago, but also the City of Moorhead's presentation last night, I, I would like to entertain a resolution that would state Clay County's position for clarification, so, you know, I don't know, Grant, if you'd like to talk a little-
Sure, I, well, I was at the meeting last night, and I, you know, it was disappointing that the city, I, I understand, you know, after their discussion, some of their reasonings for, you know, readjusting their, their priorities, but, you know, at this late juncture and dealing with the legislature, it's, you know, it creates a lot of risk that we'll get no bonding money from the state, and I think it's unfortunate the way it turned out after our discussions with the city, and then, you know, the position they ended up taking, and, but it is what it is, and so I, I agree that I think we have to send a, you know, a message to St. Paul, even at this late point, that, you know, you know, we've been dealing with this for a number of years, and, you know, I, we were pretty excited that we were in a position to finally get the bonding money we need for that transfer station, and, you know, now it's certainly at risk or in jeopardy, so I think we probably need to get a message to our legislators and to St. Paul as quickly as possible, that, you know, what our position still is, so.
Mr. Campbell?
Yeah, I, I want to comment on, you know, we are, we are, we are separate entities, and every entity comes up with their priorities and what they deal with, and when they go to St. Paul for assistance on their projects, and, and our number one priority has been that transfer station, and people don't often think that garbage is, is anything of importance until they have to let it sit in their yards for a while, because we've got no place to put it. So, so it is, it can be a significant, and it is in itself a public safety issue, but, you know, I, I'm, my, my feeling is that we need to continue to tell the legislature what Clay County's number one priority is, just like MSUM will be, continue to tell the state what their priorities are for their institution, and, or, or what Barnesville might be doing, or what Holly might be doing, they all, they all have their priorities, and they're going to stick to their priorities for that purpose, and ours is this, and, you know, and I know, you know, we can, we can talk about public safety and, and the city's project, and I, I certainly think that's, you know, for their part, it's their, their reasoning behind it. From my district, I actually think that there, there is even a better public safe, safety opportunity, and that would have been the 11th Street project. That's what I hear from my constituents, that, that in a true public safety issue, that would be a high priority, so. So I guess I've said my piece, it's, that's what the legislatures are paid to do, is determine what, what they can do for, for us. I've said my piece.
Any further comments? If not, you know, I, I certainly will read this resolution, and if you choose to, if it's something we want to adopt, we can, we can do that. So the resolution would be 2018-22, the resolution to reaffirm number one legislative priority is a transfer station and household hazardous waste facility, whereas Clay County has been engaged in legislative work to secure state bonding dollars to help facilitate a Clay County, City of Moorhead transfer station and household hazardous waste facility, and whereas Clay County's initial investment involved matching $600,000 state bonding grant for planning and design, and whereas the City of Moorhead has securely, has secured property for the construction of a solid waste transfer station, hazard, household hazardous waste facility, recycling center, and city maintenance facility, and whereas the county's number one legislative priority for the 2018 session was to secure $7.3 million in additional state bonding money to assist in the construction of a transfer station and household hazardous waste facility, now therefore be it resolved, the Clay County Board of Commissioners, that we reaffirm our commitment and our full support for the above project.
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution. I would add, too, that it's unfortunate, you know, the, the bonding money was intended for the county, and so, like I say, at this late point, you know, the real issue is if the, if the bids would have not come in for the 2021 First Street project two or three weeks later than they did, this wouldn't even be an issue right now, so I think that's one of the unfortunate things about this whole situation, but, but in any rate, I'd move the resolution.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify with a same eye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. All right, also just a note, I had commented earlier that Lakes and Currys will be having their open house and ribbon cutting at their 861 Belsley Boulevard site on Friday at 11 o'clock, and the chamber will be involved in that as well, so if that's something you can come to, it's going to be about a 20-minute presentation. If not, is there any other?
You know, I just want to go back to, to this issue and, and, and talk about a project that's come in way overpriced. There, you know, so that, that did happen with the City of Mortgage project, that they're referencing, and they have the priority to do that. Just today, we have a important project that's important to Glendon, and it came in probably in excess of 20% over the estimates, and certainly my inclination is to say hell no to that, and I, you know, something needs to be relooked at in terms of why it comes in so high over an estimate, and, and, so, what's, what's being, what's being done to that, and I just, I need to state that, that, you know, Grant said the, you know, had these bid, had those bids come in two weeks later, it wouldn't have been an issue. Had they come in under esti-, or with an estimate, it wouldn't have been an issue. That doesn't mean that you take away from everything else that's, that's there.
The fiscally responsible thing is to reevaluate the project instead of jeopardize both projects. Are there any other comments? If not, we are adjourned.